Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the unscheduled special session of the Maryland Council for the Town of Berlin. It is Monday, February 5th, 2024. Please join us in a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item one on our agenda is an opening statement by Mayor Zach Tindall. So, the purpose of this meeting is to go over a potential bond issuance for the Town of Berlin. Many of you, my colleagues, maybe not the public, but will recall that in the FY24 budget, the budget that we're in currently, there was a $750,000 line item for AMI meters, or smart meters, for the electric utility. The electric utility, just so that everybody at home understands, had handheld devices that were outdated, that are begun to fail. Natalie will talk more about that in a second, Tim, but they're down to pen and paper right now, and so it's not a good way of be recording those meter readings, and also makes it a little bit more prone to errors, just because you have the human side of things. Now, with that being said, the goal of this meeting is, one, item is the bond issuance for the AMI meters. That number will have to be adjusted a little bit. Natalie will go over that. And then Natalie also brought up the idea of potentially going to bond for a public works facility. So, we'll talk about those two items together. I'm going to turn it over to Natalie, which is agenda item number two, discussion of the application in 2024, community development administration, local government infrastructure financing program, and it has myself, Mary Boland, and Natalie on, but Natalie's going to run point, I think.
Good evening. As Mayor mentioned, on fiscal '24, we have a budgeted item for AMI meters. As previously was discussed, do basically go into the funds available either through the loan or through the bond. Discussing that with the CDA, Community Development Administration, possibility for Berlin money as a town of Berlin for AMI metering, we come across that it will be an opportunity in April to go into municipal pool of bigger issuance of bonds, which potentially uses an advantage to go without the collateral, first of all, second of all, to receive a better interest rates, which will be fixed for the duration of the bond or the loan. Advisable was to come up to all potential projects that we might need to finance, and with that said, I came to discussion to Mary to actually set aside AMI metering, increase the amount to $1 million, and also approach an idea to finance the whole entire construction of Public Works Building. So, AMI metering, we have been discussing as the necessity to have for at least, what, did five, seven years in the past?
Probably more than seven.
We have a pilot program already for downtown, for the main street, which working pretty well. The advantage of AMI metering is basically accurate reading. It's a radio read available on demand. Also, it will improve our picture shaving, because that will allow the power plant to monitor the consumption of the electricity, and also, of course, the recovery of the revenues, because the mechanical meters are manually right now, completely. We don't have the handhelds available. So, with that said, the process is very lengthy. We are utilizing a whole entire group for two to three days to go inside, read the meters, then potentially reread the meters, then the billing supervisor actually punching in every single number into the system, which creates sometimes errors, or sometimes the system kicks it out because it doesn't like it, and then obviously producing the bills as well manually, and we do it monthly. So, AMI metering is on a budget, but for the lower amount. Going into the next session, I probably will, maybe not next meeting, but the meeting after, I will prepare the budget amendment, and we'll ask to amend the amount, because we have to reflect the amount of AMI project, what we will potentially borrow it. With that said, Public Works Facility been budgeted for $400,000, which probably not even realistic number to start working on, even creating blueprints or ideas. The amount set up as a large amount of 2.8, that does not mean that we can utilize the whole amount for the public works. The amount of 3.8 to borrow through issuing a bond is not to exceed. That amount will cover all of the expenses, including electric project and the Public Works General Fund project. If we will not utilize the whole amount, or we will realize going further into the April that we don't need this amount, we can adjust the number again. But for right now, for today, in front of you, you have my staff report and recommendation to approach CDA, fill out the application, and ask to issue a general obligation bond to borrow $3.8 million to proceed with those two projects. Now, Public Works is in need of Public Works Building, same situation for many years has been discussed. They operate out of basically trailer with no heat or air conditioning. We have already land available to build the building, so the land will be not a part of the acquisition. Included in the construction, we will need to consider the cost of connecting to the water and sewer. My understanding that there is no water sewer utilities or services available going into that land. So, part of that amount for the construction will be connecting to the main of the water and sewer. Public Works serving community without any services, and I think it's very crucial for us to provide them the necessarily building to have, the garage, the administration, the body shop under one roof, that they don't have to shuffle the equipment in between and try to figure it out where they're going to store the expensive truck or other equipment. For this specific meeting, we are seeking your approval and authorization for Mayor, Mary, and myself to proceed with submitting the application to participate in April bond issuance. The application's due date is February 9. I have to submit it online. There's a lengthy process to answer the questions, make sure that we qualify. Talking to our bond counselor and CDA, the bond rates will vary, but they will be fixed. It will depend on the project itself. So, AMI metering most likely would not be financed for more than 20 years. It could be a little bit less. For the Public Works Building, it would be 30 years, because the life of the asset itself, of the building. In that amount, all the expenses associated with the CDA, bond counselor, closing costs, anything that you can think of, will be included in that amount, so we will not have to spend anything else extra after all. Now, the big question, how are we going to pay for it later on? So, the electric, if we go into the rate of 5%, I kind of put a little bit projection for you in the staff report, if we go into the 5%, which I believe it will be probably a little bit less, because the rate's been favorable in the past couple of months, we're looking at about $80,000 to $90,000 a year principal and interest payment, which electric fund can carry that expense from the regular operational revenues collected for the services. We are applying for a grant, which potentially will help. We're not sure how much it's going to be, but of course, anything will help. And we're working with Busson Associates to create electric rate study, which probably will be for discussion later, if we can recover that costs, costs of the AMI metering through the rate study later on in the terms. For the general fund, I have suggested to set aside certain amount, a portion from the slots revenues, basically following the instruction and recommendations of the legit funding that we're receiving from the casino revenues, to shift away from the layup. So, the amount will be shifted away and applied towards the principal and interest of the building till it's repaid in full. We can allocate the fund from impact fees to certain amount. We can discuss it later terms, and in case of absolutely, like, what-if scenario, we can also cover the principal and interest from the debt reserve that we have set aside, and we can potentially replenish it going forward from the unsigned balance of the general fund. The interest rate will be fixed for the whole entire term of the loan. For the first 10 years, we're not allowed to prepay or refinance, but after 10 years, we can refinance. And in the past history, we've have done refinancing and decreased the interest rates. Also, we've done a prepayment in advance, which allows to save for the future round to minimize the interest expense. I think I've gone through everything right now that I have in my mind, if you have any questions. So, in the staff report, you have a little short summary, and also, there is an attachment from our bond counselor, Lindsay Rader. She offered us to be present for the future meetings on the phone if we have any questions, so she's there, she's available, she's very knowledgeable with dumb business with her and fast. She knows our chatter, she's worked with Dave Gaskell, so she's very comfortable helping us to go through the process, and if I can take lead on that, I think we will be successful to participate. The opening for the bond, like I said, application due date is February 9. The interests will be decided in April. In May, we will have the full funding available, so we potentially can move forward and start the project in fiscal '24, re-budget it to fiscal '25, gearing forward. The first payment will be due in October, interest only. It gives us pretty much the whole entire year kind of offset, and then the next principal and interest payments will be due in April of 2025. So, it gives us pretty much eight months till we have to start repaying it.
Open up the questions from the council.
That last part was interesting. So, it was all interesting, but then, so eight months, that gives us time to decide how to handle the general fund repayment?
Yes, definitely.
Right? Yeah, because I think those, to me, just, of course, we didn't pack it earlier, but I don't know that I'm prepared to, you know, really determine a repayment mechanism at this time, but I think that it's nice having that timeline. The $2.8 million Public Works campus, how did that number come about? And just curious where that large number came from.
So, we kind of discussed that, obviously, 400 is not going to cover the whole cost, but going into a all-inclusive facility with the water sewer infrastructure underground. And like I said, we went on a higher end, and we might not, when we get closer to actual cost estimates, we can shift it back. So, the 2.8 is just above the million with 3.8 not to exceed, to go into the bond end. It doesn't mean that 2.8 will be spent on Public Works.
Right, and it's used ad.
Right.
Well, and also, up next, for next Monday, will be an RFQ for design services. So, we're moving that ball forward as well, so hopefully, by the time the bond comes through, we'll have a better idea of what we're wanting to build, how much something like that would cost. And then, as Natalie said, hopefully, we can adjust the principal from that point. But, I mean, 2.8 is higher than what I expected. I had originally talked with Jimmy, I thought we were closer around the million mark, but given the water and sewer services and the other things, there is a little bit of padding there, quite a bit of padding. Now, what we're going to need as far as an all-inclusive site to keep the equipment out of the elements, we don't know yet.
So, with the water and sewer, would that be something where we would transfer, use from?
Yes, yep. From the parcel 52 to, no, 57 to 410.
Now, the biggest advantage of having available pool of money under general fund, it doesn't mean that we cannot reshift portion. Let's pretend that we did borrow 3.8. The million will go on the electric. We cannot take a portion and shift it to general fund, but 2.8 under general fund, let's say we spent $2 million on Public Works, and we still have $800,000 available, we can reallocate later on by additional step to a different project. It doesn't mean, as long as the purpose for the general fund.
But with that comes, comes the necessary reapprovals and that type thing.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
That reappropriation has to be done at this level.
It has to be done.
Tell me, you talked about principal and interest, $90,000. What part of the projects does that cover?
I was talking about electric part of the million, so the principal and interest will be around $90,000 to pay a year, and the payments are bi-annual, so it's October and April.
You also said that, that your statement was to make sure that we qualify, that there's things that, questions that need to be answered. So, so there is a possibility that, that after you do all this work, we might not qualify?
I'm pretty certain we will qualify. They go through the process of looking at our financial statements, asking questions, making sure that we have everything in order, but from what we have in place and from our perfect audit, I don't see any hiccup.
Now, our financial position's in a strong spot. Now, the other part, Vice President, is that it's important to note that the $90,000, as Natalie said, is electric, but for the general fund obligation, it would probably be around $185,000.
Natalie talked about how these bonds and these projects would, would impact on our operations, but I would like to hear from Jimmy and Tim, just what these projects would do for us and the citizens of the Town of Berlin.
So, the Public Works Building would give us a better facility to maintain equipment. It gives us a place to, like Natalie said, right now, we're in a tin can trailer, and it gives us a facility that would meet our future goals too, that's office space, employee locker room, showers, just a simple, even a kitchen would be nice, and then also have a place where we have mechanics to be able to do all of our in-house mechanic work and stuff. We do ship mechanic work out right now. One of the things we talked about was having bays where we could actually do our police cars and have that service brought back in-house with a facility that meets, because even our, where our garage is, our garage is just an old pole barn that, or an old shed that they put walls on and ran electric to. So, we're bringing ourselves up to 2024 standards, and some of the things like the pricing, there's no water, there's no sewer, there's no electric.
Used for working, basically, working raw.
Back to where we're thinking of putting the building. So, that price tag, it seems healthy, but it's not just, it's not just the focus of getting into Public Works or the Public Works Building, it's actually we'll meet all our needs for that properties, to get hydrants back there, water back there, that actually then can be distributed through the whole property of all three of them other parcels that are there. Future skate park, you know, if that's.
Permanent restroom.
You know, right. So, there's other opportunities with just getting the water, sewer, electric to the Public Works Building that will benefit the rest of the community in that area.
And I think that it's important to note, you said it, but to highlight the fact that there are vehicles that we criminally outsource servicing for.
Correct.
That could be brought internally with a cost savings.
Correct.
So, Mayor, if you feel.
Let me hear from Tom.
As far as AMI, we've been looking at going to AMI metering for at least seven years. In fact, I'd probably just about bet we are probably the only electric utility municipality in the state of Maryland that doesn't have AMI. Most of them have converted to that years ago. We've had a project downtown for many years. It was about probably 96 meters on, and the readings can be downloaded within like five minutes. An AMI metering gives you a lot of advantages. For example, the customer themselves will be able to go to a customer portal on the internet, and they can actually see their usage every 15 minutes. So, say, for example, during the winter time, when the heat is really, you know, your heating system is running, it's really cold outside, a customer can actually go in there, and every time their heating system kicks on, they can see their electricity spike. So, say in appliance, for example, dishwasher, that type of thing, they can tell which appliance is actually drawing the most electricity, and they can actually control that, and, you know, during those high peak demand times, not running, which actually decreases their electric bill. Then also, it helps us as far as, you know, man mistakes done by paper and pencil, for example. When you're entering data, there's two or three different things that happen. When we're in the field, we're handwriting those readings in there, but when they get in here, then you have to sit there and manually put that data into the computer system, which there could be an error there also. So, there's a lot of times we'd go out and have to do rereads based on that, so that's another trip out into the field. Another good example is when we're doing transfers, for example, somebody moves out, new person moves in, we have to go out and read that meter. So, when the new person moves in, we know where their meter reading starts. They'll actually be able to do that right here in Town Hall. They can manually, I mean, not manually, remotely look at the meter reading, and they know, okay, that's the reading, this person's moving in on this date, so that automatically transfers. That's without sending a truck out there, so you're saving on wear and tear on the vehicles, the gas that you're using, emissions, that's a big thing. You're cutting down on your emissions output. And another thing you can also do with it, if you require it, you can have the meter set up with temperature. So, basically, you can tell if that meter's overheating to where it might cause a fire or something. It will actually send an alarm to the system that's basically tells us we need to go out there and check that meter, because it's heating up. We've been out on calls for the meter base, the logs are actually melted from the demand. Well, these meters will give you the capability of telling you remotely that something's wrong with it, and then it'll send an alarm to where we can go out there, fill the safety aspect of it. And then another thing, you can also have the meters ordered with remote disconnect. So, let's just say a customer from non-payment or whatever needs us, or we need to shut the meter down remotely, we could actually do that. Or if there's a fire at the house, for example, fire department calls us and tells us we need power shutdown, we can actually shut it off remotely, going into the house. There's a lot of capabilities to the system.
To add to that, Tim, also, from what I'm reading, it will be helping you to determine your picture, because the data that is collected daily can be converted to monthly and then annually, we can actually look into the past and kind of predict the future where the demand should be happening in case.
Correct.
There is a misread or something.
There's one other thing that it does I didn't mention. It will give us the capability of looking, let's say we have a transformer that's serving seven houses, for example. We can actually look at that demand total for those seven homes, and if we have a transformer that's sitting there that's oversized, it actually takes more power to run an oversized transformer than what the actual demand is. So, that will tell us that, okay, this transfer, this location only requires a 50 KVA transformer. When we, say we have a 75 or 100 sitting there, we could actually take that out, install a 50 that should be there, and you're actually reducing the amount of purchase power that you're buying, because it takes less to operate that transformer. So, there's a savings in that also.
To add to the Public Works, the necessity, if you think Public Works is not just one department, we have sanitation, they don't have potentially a safe place to call it office or home, where they, in case of emergency, they cannot even come and take a shower. I mean, every single employee is so proud of being part of the Public Works, but if they ask every single one of them, they're going to tell you how not proud they are, what they operate from.
Yeah, I, I, that building.
That building was meant to be a temporary solution.
For sure, no doubt.
Forty-five, fifty years ago.
Just thinking about the possibility of hazardous waste, these guys have no place to go wash that off of themselves, unless they go around on Schofield Street and say, hey, guys, can we come in and take a shower real quick? So, just that to me alone, the safety aspect stands out tenfold, or even, we haven't had any snow in Chicago, I wish we had, but, we haven't had any snow this year, but even in days of inclement weather, when these guys have to stay over, I mean, you're staying in a shack with no, literally, a shack with no heat. I can't, we don't even do that to our pets. Come on now, and that's not, not kosher, so.
Well, I know I have some stuff. So, I just wanted to clarify a few things. First off, the projects themselves, yes, all four. So, we're obviously looking at, you said parcel 410?
I meant 191.
Oh, okay.
It's a blend of 410 and 191. Sorry. It's been a little while since we've discussed Aaron Park, so I don't have the parcels off the top, but 52 is the.
So, you're looking at, so you're looking at 191, okay, or we're looking at 191. How much debt do we currently carry?
On the general fund?
Like, yeah, in the general fund.
We have a sizable portion, but those bonds are being carried from very, very fast and have very favorable interest rates.
But the total debt service, principal and interest, is less than $190,000 a year on the general fund?
Okay. So, on your, in your, I'm trying to say here, in your staff report, the financial impact here, you have, if you have it there, under FY24 budgeted, electric, $750,000, Public Works Building, $400,000, and then there's a little ask, a little note there, that at a later date, we may be having the option of moving that towards the Town Hall renovation. How much is set aside for that currently, the Town Hall renovation?
500.
500, okay. I was just wondering, would it be better, or would it behoove us to still keep the $400,000 and only do the bond for 2.4? Is there any value in that?
I think the, I think part of the issue with that would be that we don't, we don't think the Town Hall can be done for just 500,000. So, you're moving, you're robbing Peter to pay Paul to some extent, but to Natalie's earlier point, we anticipate that the 2.8 will end up being less at the point that we actually.
The ideal goal would be to finance less than the 1 million on the electric side and less than the 2.8 on the general fund side. That's the goal, but as Natalie stated, we're trying to make sure we have the buffer in there. We're working some grant options for the electric side, we don't know what that value would be, and then we don't know what the additional cost for Public Works would be. I think the other side of that too, is that we're not just going to run the size sewer pipe or water line that it's going to take to service the toilet and shower at Public Works. We're going to upsize that to be able to handle future development back on 410, if that's the case, as well as public restroom amenities.
So, just as a guess, and this right now relates to this, what ED, how many EDs would you think you need for this, for 410?
That would be a better question for Jamie.
I wouldn't guess on that.
And really, we wouldn't have that answer wholly for Public Works until it's designed.
So, what Mayor is mentioning right now for the infrastructures underground, put in and connecting to the main, make sure that we have set this way, so for the future, if something develops, we will have connection. So, it's not just taken from A to B, so it's going to be a main line, and from the main line to with that lots where Public Works will.
two with that lots where Public Works will be connected. EDUs here would not be involved in that process.
And then my final question. You had mentioned possibility, and it's a possibility, of using casino revenues. So in that scenario, we would be using that funding for partial LEOPS, partial this, partial community center, and partial, something else I'm forgetting?
It would be a change of expenditure, so you would, this would be a new expense. So new, additional revenues would be needed to offset the cost of this bond obligation, whether that's revenue growth by growth of the tax base, whether that's revenue growth through another mechanism. But the objective would be to peel down the LEOPS costs from the LDC multi-year plan. That's what our goal is. And then shift that obligation, like what we did with the police department, through the Public Works debt obligation. But we will have to put pen to paper on how we're going to overcome that additional...
We will need a solution to pick up the differential from the LEOPS, obviously, but that will allow us to deviate from a full fund and the LEOPS with the slots revenues as been asked from us in the past.
Okay.
Can I add one thing, too? The 400,000 was to replace on William Street. So we were going to demolish the building that was there. We already had water, we had sewer, we had electric. Everything we needed was there within 10 feet of where we were going to replace with 400,000. We were going to put a hole bar in there. Some zoning issues kind of created a, you know, iffy situation and some other anti-area setback, and just kind of jamming something in, that little small location too, in that area. So when we moved to Heron Park, we just now created a lot bigger issues of we didn't have water, sewer, and electric. And now we got to bring it off the road, which is 500 yards from the building. So that's the, you know, there's a lot of cost and expense, creating a new street with that, probably some sidewalks, new hydrants, return lines.
He's making a hearing, so what?
Steve's Highway. The other thing is, too, I mean, it, could William Street potentially be made to work? Possibly, but it's sandwiched in a residential community, like you're going to overbuild for that, so it's probably not the best and appropriate use.
And think of, think of expansion in the future, think about it, that we're growing, put in the big building, accommodate the whole Public Works on the current place where they're all probably not going to solve the problem, it's just going to be a better trailer.
Well, not just that, thinking about the other location, the 410 11th and I'm still us, thinking about that Heron Park location, all those plots that we had were, whatever, 410, nine, 891.
It's 191.
I'm just, I'm making up the numbers. I'm making a mess. Yeah, but those, we're helping with that, with whatever it is we plan on doing with that site in the future by running the water and sewer through there. So, I mean, I know that that sounds like a huge chunk of money, it's not a little chunk of money, but it's going to be working for more than just one project. And I think that's the part that everybody in iPad, whatever they're watching from, needs to be able to grasp as well. It's not just Public Works and the electric company, but it's also for the future of that site.
And there are other ways, too. I think that it's important to note, yes, we have these things in front of us, and we have to plan as if it's somewhat in a vacuum. But if we can find some consensus on a repurposing of parcel 57, there's ways that we can maybe overcome some of the costs here through a repurposing of that site. So we have tools at our disposal, but we just need, what's important is that we provide direction to Natalie on, hey, this is a possibility, please continue to pursue it, or no, we got to shelf it and...
And you build it for free.
And honestly, at the bear, I mean, both of these projects need to be moved forward. It's just a matter of what this group is comfortable doing.
So this is, I said it last meeting to ask the group to think about the future of the property of Heron Park. And I think that that's, this obviously fits really, really well into it. It's obvious that would be a great place for a new Public Works building. I'm ready to make a motion if that's what you're looking for.
Well, let's move from discussion to item for approval.
I did just want to add one other thing in the process. There will be a first reading of the ordinance at the February 26 meeting, and then public hearing at the first meeting in March. And the reasoning for that is to allow the referendum period on ordinance, which is 20 days, in time for the next kind of level of this, which is April 7, not next, but next deadline on CDA's part.
So I just want to clarify, though, for everyone listening, that the public hearing is not the design hearing, correct?
No, not at all. The public hearing is, will be for the CDA bond ordinance.
March 11.
Yes, March 11, thank you.
All right, so next is agenda item number three, item for approval, motion 2024-05, approve the application to the CDA, 2024 Local Government Infrastructure Financing Program.
I'm going to make that motion to approve 2024-05, the application for the local infrastructure government financing program.
Before we get a second on that, I do want to say that the Finance Director, myself, and Sarah met with Councilmember Ner, who could not be here since this is a special meeting, and he was also in agreement with moving forward. We obviously have a lot of similar questions about strategies for overcoming the debt service that would be brought on both of those funds, but he was supportive, please correct me if I'm wrong, he was supportive of moving forward as well, so.
He was not good for it.
Yes, so we have a motion by Councilmember Oris, second by Councilmember Nichols. Councilmember Green, do you have a question?
Well, just in the memo, there's five points that it says that need to be decided, but I guess we're deciding those. The motion doesn't have the dollar amount in it. Oh, I see it does here, but he didn't, okay. Yeah, yeah, I'm good. There's five points are covered in the motion, and, I'm sorry, on page...
Page two.
Second to the last page.
Oh, you're talking about the...
This Raynor's memo?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, we're talking about my staff report.
No, we're talking about Lindsay's.
So, yeah, it will cover, I think, under also one and two, like the legal part.
Include the fees and...
Yes, oh, yes. The amounts that we accounted for are intended to cover all fees, closing costs, anything that we can.
So a motion by Councilmember Oris, the second by Councilmember Nichols, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect the votes unanimous with Councilmember Ner.
Do we, do we need a motion authorizing the mayor, Mayor, and Natalie to, to proceed on the Heron?
I don't think so, it's within the...
I think it's covered.
It's in the motion.
It's within, yeah. And then it don't follow the same pathways as other, as other approvals, by the time...
Well, Jack, I feel that this, you know, I snapped at you because it made me, because my brain was thinking what your mouth was about to say, but it really was. That's how I applaud my students at school. So I'm applauding you because my brain was like, okay, so we're already having the appetite to just, to think about where to go with that location, what's next. And now that we're already in the demolition phase or moving towards that, putting these utilities in that location as well are, you know, getting this spot nice and geared up for the next step. Yeah, yeah, I mean, we've spent a lot of time there dealing with that, and I think that today, with the things that are, with the plans that are in place at this particular moment for that location, I feel more ready to deal with it now than I ever have regarding anything, RFPs and any of the others. I think that we're at a better place today than we had been even during that first phase.
I would agree. I think we're in a good spot.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to agenda item number four, public comment. Anybody from the public who wishes to address the Marion County? Yes, just come forward, name and street name if you don't mind.
Yeah, I'm just talking to Mayor, I'm already engaged on the camera report. I just, I don't, I'm kind of, I just have some clarified questions about this procedure we just got in here. You all have voted to proceed with the CDA, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.